Mr. Clerk, would you please call the role?
Commissioner Moritas.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Glassman. Commissioner McKenzie.
He's here.
Vice Mayor Sorenson.
The mayor is on.
Mayor Tran Tals.
Here. Mister, Mister City Manager, do you want, are you gonna make a presentation?
So, the first item that's on the agenda is brought forward is old new business tonight, which is a further discussion on what you all want to do on the short-term basis for appointing an interim city auditor. What we provided to you tonight was two proposals that we've received. I asked our finance director, who is familiar with the industry, to just reach out to a couple, a couple of firms to see if they have interest in providing a proposal. What came back was, was two things. One was a proposal from a firm that you'll have, Markham, that is well-known in the area, a large auditing firm. There's representatives here if you were to have questions about what they can offer.
Chris.
Yes.
Did someone specifically ask you to ask Markham?
So, what I did at the last meeting.
That was just a joke, Chris, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's right. You tried to bring me up to.
See those commercials?
No.
Never mind. Ask Markham.
Ask Markham, okay.
Never mind.
So, we all know how we got to.
Never mind, I'll dial it back, never mind, thanks.
Asking the ones we asked. And then also, our, our finance director was familiar with a former, former auditor from both the Broward County School System as well as the Miami-Dade School System. And she reached out to him to see if he would have any interest, as we sometimes do, like I did in our police department, for example, bringing in an interim that is only intended to be the interim. And so, you have a resume for review in your backup as well. Two different models, that was the only proposal we got from a firm. If you want to explore further an individual for the time being while we perform the larger search. I have been in contact with the firm that you directed me to reach out to, Strategic Government Resources, and started a discussion with their president and CEO as to timing and when it's appropriate to move forward with advertising for the position so that we can bring you in the loop then as a part of the decision-makers for, for the recruitment itself. I'll follow back up with him after what, after I learn what you all decide to do tonight. And then with his coaching and direction, I'll bring back feedback to you as to when he believes it's appropriate to start the more nationwide search for a permanent city auditor. With that.
Chris, Chris, what would be, what would be this outside auditor's interim auditor's role? What would they be doing?
Well, I think, I mean, the charter provides the direction as to what they do, and I think they would be overseeing the audit work plan. I think in these two circumstances, one would be done more with a partner from a firm that would be disconnected or attached to us for a period of time. The other would probably be the more traditional approach where you'd have a person that would, would work in the office and oversee the day-to-day function of the audit office as well as the, the management of the audit work plan.
And would they be attending our city commission meetings?
If you all directed that, my, if I, my gut says yes, you all would have to direct that, if you wanted that, they certainly could.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of, of Chris? Well, I would like to see somebody certainly, I mean, sit in that chair at each of our meetings because issues do come up and we do need to have an opinion of an auditor. So, that's one thing. Secondly, we need to have somebody who oversees the operation. There are obviously existing auditing, auditing projects that are taking place, so we need to have someone who can continue working on those, overseeing that, that they're getting done. And then we just have to, and I think we've already given you the authority to go reach out and try to find a new auditor, have we not?
You have, and I've begun those discussions. We issued a notice to proceed to the company that you all directed us to move forward with. They want us, just very candidly with you all, they want to see what you do tonight, and then they'll make a recommendation based upon what they know of the market as to the right time to advertise so that we have the highest likelihood of drawing the most qualified candidates.
Okay. So, do you have a recommendation to the commission as to which you, wherever you'd like us to go ahead with?
My thoughts, too.
I do not. This is more just providing information than making a recommendation. I think either of the options that were provided to you could function in the role.
All right. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, looking over the proposal by just Mr. Riley versus the firm, I do believe Mr. Riley has a lot of experience and is well-qualified to do the position. He's coming out of retirement, so it seems like a good fit. And it's also about half the cost, isn't it, Chris? Just the, Mr. Riley versus the firm?
It is. One would be paid on an hourly basis, the other, obviously hourly, too, and there was a different fee based upon time of year.
Okay.
As I was reviewing the proposal.
So, I, I, I think just looking at that difference, and it's one person in charge versus a team in charge, or maybe the firm would assign one person.
I probably should let Markham speak for themselves there. I think the proposal was such that it would have a consistent, there would be some consistency in the office with maybe then some support from the bench.
Okay, yeah.
If you could just go to the podium, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Markham speak for themselves rather than me try to speak for them.
Is Mr. Riley in attendance tonight also?
He was not able to.
He's not able to come? Okay.
Hello.
Good afternoon. My name is Brandon Lopez. I'm a senior manager with the firm, Markham, and I'm here to answer any questions, but in specific to your questions, there would be one specific individual assigned to be essentially the internal auditor to lead the team. We would be onsite. We plan to do two days a week to lead the team and go through the projects that are ongoing, and then also be present for any commission meetings as well throughout the, I think there's two a month, we'd be ready to present at those. And if there's any extra meetings that the council and the commission would like us to be present for, we would absolutely be in attendance as well.
Okay. I'm sure your firm is, is very well-qualified. I do have concerns about the two days a week. I, I, I know I've asked our charter officers to come back to work full-time in person, and I've also asked them if their, their teams, and especially their leadership team, could work in person again, and I just think there's a lot of value. I think that office now probably would be best served to have someone full-time every day, just giving them just that, just, just helping be a part of the team.
Absolutely, and leading them and not just teaching them, but also giving that experience that, you know, somebody might have in that role.
Right.
And we base that two days based on kind of some discussions we've had with the city, but if that is something that the city would like to have someone there full-time, all day, every day, that is something we can accommodate as well. We, we have an extensive, you know, firm behind us. We, we've been in operations for over 70 years. We're a top 15 firm, we're a national firm, but we still have that small firm presence. We're actually located just a couple of blocks down the street on La Solas, and the team that we've put together, the one individual, is from the for-lauder office. And if it's something that the city would like to have in person the entire week, every day, we can absolutely make that happen as well.
Right. And, and the commission maybe can weigh in a little bit. I just, I, I have had the opportunity also to work with the auditing team since you all assigned me to that task last week. We were able to meet. I just, I just feel like it would probably be a best practice to have the team back working in person. I think there, the team has been, some people have been kind of a little bit in and out, and everyone's kind of trying to transition back after the pandemic. I think it would help the overall morale and the, the team kind of work together again to kind of come back in person. And that's just what I noticed by my interactions with them, and that's, that was my suggestion. So, like I said, I think both groups are probably qualified. I do think it's probably a good fit to have someone probably who wants to maybe come back out of retirement and just kind of fill in for a little bit while we're trying to hire that, that big national person, and who just really wants to kind of give their, their leadership and their mentoring and just their, their expertise kind of to our city. I don't know, I, I just, I feel like I'm leaning towards maybe just the Mr. Riley and just that one person, as opposed to a firm, nothing against your credentials, so forgive me, but I'll let you all speak.
Commissioner McKenzie, do you have any thoughts?
I would echo the, the recommendations from the vice mayor, who we actually charged with looking after the office until we could figure out where we wanted to go. I'm not so keen on a firm doing it. I'd rather have a person there to, to me, it didn't have to be that person, but that person's okay in the interim, am I correct?
Right.
To keep the office stable, if you would, and move it forward until we could figure out, no, where, where we're going. So, I like what you've done, and I would, I would definitely consider that if that's the will or the consensus of the body.
Commissioner Glassman.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I have mixed feelings about this, I'll be brutally honest about the, I mean, Mr. Riley's resume looks incredibly proficient and ready for the task, but I will be honest to tell you that in all of those years, the school board did not have a stellar reputation when it came to handling many things financial. So, I, I would need to know more about the actual involvement in, in the bond, in the management, in the finances. I mean, I've just read so many negative articles, and again, I don't believe everything I read, but I, I just have heard so much that there are many questions. So, I, again, I don't know the intricacies of the involvement of Mr. Riley, although it looks really good. I don't have any problem at all with a firm like Markham doing it. I think that they, I think it would be one person, I think that we would probably still have the same consistency. So, I'm, I'm actually probably leaning towards the firm at this moment until I would maybe be able to find out a little bit more information. But again, I, over the years, I've just had lots of questions about the, the way the school board of Broward County has handled financial matters. That's all, that's my honest feeling right now, thanks.
Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. Let me just ask some basic questions that maybe I'm missing in the backup, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ben. I apologize, I referred to the Vice Mayor Emeritus. It's okay, it's in transition.
I think Vice Mayor Emeritus is appropriate title, so, you know.
I think I'm the Vice Mayor.
That's why when I heard the voice, okay.
Versus rookie, you know.
Vice Mayor, I thought I was the Vice Mayor.
This is the second time around.
There can be more than one Vice Mayor Emeritus.
Okay, good.
Yeah, the, the honorable Vice Mayor Emeritus, we have several.
Okay.
The esteemed body.
Immediate removed, how about that?
That's right. Twice removed.
Did you read that in the paper, too?
Thank you, Commissioner. So, Chris, let me, and, and just make sure I'm, I'm kind of tracking this right. So, for Patrick O'Reilly, or, sorry, Patrick Riley. Okay, so, the option with Patrick Riley is he would come in as the interim city auditor, Chris, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. What would the pay be for, for him?
We think in the range of what we paid when we had an interim police chief, that's about $100 an hour.
$100 an hour?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then how many hours a week would, would Patrick Riley be working?
Well, if the desire of the commission was to have a full-time person in the, in the building, then we would calculate that on a typical 80-hour, two work weeks, you know, on a, for 40 hours a week.
40 hours a week, okay. 40 hours a week, okay. And so, again, just the idea is he could be the interim city auditor. He would lead the effort. Now, would Arlisha remain as a HR partner for solely HR pieces?
As HR needs arise in the auditor's office or the clerk's office, we do provide HR services to those offices.
Okay, so kind of HR support, okay. And the current city auditing team would remain intact, is that right?
That's correct.
Right, okay. Would, would Patrick Riley have hiring and firing authority?
He'd have whatever authority you all granted him to have. And what I heard at the last meeting was for the interim period until a city auditor is placed.
Yes.
That there was to be no hiring, no firing.
That's, that's my preference as well, okay. But I just want to kind of clear, be, be clear there, okay. Okay, so, Patrick Riley, so that's one option. He couldn't be here today, but he's interested in this role and he expressed.
Yeah, I could let the finance director come to the podium, and, and she was the one that reached out to him and was aware of his recent retirement. I do not regretfully know more than you know, and that's just what's kept him on the resume.
No, that's fine. I don't, I mean, just my own sense, I don't feel comfortable appointing someone as interim auditor unless they're here and we can kind of talk with them, so that's just my.
Right, there's, I'm just sort of looking for direction tonight. This is not on your agenda for action today.
Great.
In fact, you can't take action because we didn't publish it as a motion and didn't publish it as a resolution.
You just want feedback.
I'll take what you give me as feedback and inform what is brought forward next Tuesday for your action.
Perfect, okay, great, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so, you'll be able to bring this up at our next meeting, and it would be great if Mr. Riley could appear at our next meeting, because I agree with the vice mayor. It's hard to hire somebody off a piece of paper, so it'd be great if we could talk with that person, and, and if the firm could also invite the person that they feel they could assign to the city on a, on that temporary basis, it would also be good if that person did come to the next meeting as well.
Understood, and, and agree. I've got Susan Grant at the podium, she was the one that reached out to Mr. Riley, maybe she can provide a little context and background as to how these two ideas came to be, and then we can leave it at that for tonight unless you have some feedback.
I still have more questions for Markham.
Fair enough.
But, thanks.
Okay. You want to do that real quick, Susan, and then go back to questions for Markham?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioner Susan Grant, Director of Finance. When we were talking about this at our last meeting, I reached out to three different firms. Markham was very quick to respond, but I thought about someone I had known personally.
Great.
So, I served for five years on the school board audit committee, and I knew Pat from there, and knew he was retired. So, I reached out to say, hey, would you be interested? And I wanted to be able to present you with just two different options for you to consider.
Okay, perfect, that's great, Susan, thank you for doing that, that's excellent.
Okay. So, I think, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I just have some questions for Markham, but, but go ahead, Mayor.
No, 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 I was just gonna conclude the discussion, so continue your questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, pronounce your first name?
Brandon, Brandon Lopez.
Brandon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Brandon, great, thank you. And what's your role at Markham?
I'm a senior manager with the firm.
Okay, great. Awesome. So, Brandon, and help, just so the public is kind of clear and we're all straight, so what would the cost be of, of your, what's your proposed cost?
So, on, on the proposal we provided, if you go to.
What page are we?
Page 12.
Page 12, let me just get there. Okay, got it?
And here we have the hourly rate on the different individuals. So, we've, we've assigned and designated a specific person. You can see there's Scott Montgomery as the designated internal auditor. So, he would be the one that would be onsite assisting and leading the team based on the risk assessment that's being performed in the current ongoing projects. We know that this is a temporary, you know, process while the city does look for their permanent intern, so we'd be going based off the risk assessment that was already performed and some of the projects that are ongoing. And as you can see here, we've also identified two additional, which are the partners for technical resources if the city, you know, would request any additional services. But Scott Montgomery is the one that would be leading the team.
Okay, and he's a partner at Markham?
He is a, a director.
He's a director?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, hourly rate during the calendar months, okay, so we're, okay, so 220, okay, so, so the idea is we would pay, so your proposal is to pay Scott $225 an hour through December as needed, and then these other folks would be if we need additional help, additional.
Correct. And, and we've kind of based this structure on, on past experience with other cities that we've performed this type of service, depending on if they want us full-time, three days a week, you know, two days a week, and really leading the team in kind of a hybrid model while being there in person, teaching them, training them, but also kind of supervising them whether remotely or in person. So, while you might have a person full-time, the experience that kind of comes with like a national firm with the training that we provide on a basically no-cost additional because we have not just the training in person, but we also have a, a database of actual CPE, continuing education for all of our, our clients that, that we service. That would be an at-no-cost additional that we provide.
Okay. And Scott would be available 40 hours a week?
Absolutely.
If we wanted him? Okay, 40 hours a week? Okay, and again, Chris, just to be clear, even if, and, and the idea would be Scott could be named interim city auditor, is that, is that the idea?
I believe so. I believe that it could happen that way, yes.
Okay, and again, just as with Patrick, the city auditor team would remain intact as it currently stands, and also Scott would not have hiring or firing abilities, right? Just.
Correct.
Same, same thing?
The correct answer is if that's the direction you give.
Exactly.
It is, that is what will happen.
Great. So, in addition to the difference between, you know, Pat being, you know, individual, one individual, and, and Scott being part of a broader organization with Markham, so that's one difference between these two options. Another difference is the cost, right? So, Scott would cost more than twice as much for, than Pat, right, Chris?
Correct.
Basically what we're looking at. Now, what's your expectation, just round numbers, Chris, in terms of how long would we need a interim city auditor? Any guesses, months?
Longer than 120 days, but hopefully not any longer than 180.
Okay.
Four to six months.
So, four to six months.
And that factors in the time it takes to recruit. You all vet, make your selection, and relocate if necessary. That's just a natural window.
Okay. So, okay, so I guess, you know, cost is consideration, kind of resources that the person brings with them is another consideration. So, Chris, are you wanting from us which one of these two, or can, could. So Chris, are you wanting from us which one of these two or can, could we say, hey, we'd like to talk to both of these folks and could they both come back?
You certainly could. You can either give me direction and you'll just find that the resolution that's brought forward that's on the advertised agenda would be more complete if you give direction tonight. If you don't, then it will likely be a fairly generic resolution that just has a blank on it. Who you would appoint if you choose to move forward at the meeting.
Okay. Got it. So Mayor, my suggestion would be I'd like to meet, you know, at a commission meeting, both Pat and Scott and just kind of hear from both of them and, and be able to make a decision from there. It's just, just an idea, Mayor.
I think that's the best way to approach this. I agree. So why don't we give the city manager the authority to ask them to go ahead and please, if they could, come to our next city commission meeting and we can talk to them in person. In the meantime, we can figure out the numbers, how that works for us. You know, two twenty-five an hour, you know, most professionals do not bill eight hours a day.
Right.
And so, you know, that kind of concerns me that we're looking at a forty-hour week at two twenty-five an hour. You know, we, that's pretty hefty. So maybe they can come back to us with, with the question of how they would better bill us rather than doing it on an hourly basis. Now they know that we're looking for someone full-time.
Yeah, it's a good, good point, Mayor. I mean, the one thing that's run through my head and, and again, maybe we can, you know, I don't know if there's, is do we need them for forty hours? Commissioner, do you, what do you think? Do you think we need them for forty? If we do, that's, that's a fair point. What's your sense?
I don't know exactly what they do day-to-day. It just seems like the team could kind of use.
Need.
O cohesive.
Full-time. Yeah, you think.
Stabilizing presence in the, in the room. And I agree with, I agree with her.
As opposed to someone who's not there and pick up the phone and maybe they answer, maybe they don't. It just seems like.
Yeah.
I'll be everyone just needs to kind of get back in person, work as a team, be able to collaborate a little bit more as opposed to just, you know, a professional on the outside, just giving some auditing advice here and there as needed.
Yep.
I don't know. It just.
That makes sense.
Seems like it would just be better. I, I just don't know. I don't know both of them though, so it makes sense to talk to both of them. And, you know, when we interviewed Alan, we did so in the morning or before the commission meeting. Something we want to do in the public during our conference meeting or is this something we want to do? Do we have to do it?
We are going to be here together. I think you have to do it.
Yeah, why don't we do it at the conference meeting and then we can vote on it?
Do it at the conference meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
So then I can ask if you can inform your colleague Scott to see if he can attend our meeting Tuesday, next Tuesday, the nineteenth at one thirty.
One thirty. Okay.
I think full-time too.
You think full-time? Yeah.
I'm, I'm. Get the stability.
I agree.
It doesn't matter who.
Right.
What matters is we have someone there.
Consistent.
Someone we pick that can take care of the day-to-day operations and manage the office is what.
Yep.
Concerns me more so than anything. And also that two twenty-five, you might want to go back and see how you can figure that out because I know that you're, you're sharing with the firm. We're looking for a body.
Understood.
Okay.
And Susan, you can get word to. She go. You can get word to Mr. Riley for the same opportunity to attend. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Very much.
Okay.
And Mayor, Mayor Allen, I have one related item that I wanted to just briefly bring up. On April fourth, I had forwarded to you all individually a letter received from Mr. Herbst's counsel with regards to an offer he was making. My recommendation to you was to reject it outright. I just need your official okay in that regard from you as a city commission.
I'm sorry, what are you saying now?
On April fourth, I forwarded you all individually.
At that.
Okay. A letter.
So now you're, you want me, you want me to reject the letters, what you're asking, right?
I recommended to you to reject the offer and you as my client, the city commission, I would need you to have a majority of you agree to that. It's not my decision.
Don't we typically do this closed door?
No, because there's no claim. This is, uh, no pending laws. Right. This is just a pending, this, this is just.
Someone saying, hey, look here, I want you to give me this.
Yeah, exactly. Right.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I, I read the letter. I read the offer. I thought the offer was unacceptable, so I would reject the offer. Do we need to poll this? Is there anybody who wants to accept the offer? If there being none, then, then it's unanimous to reject the offer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else you want to sneak in?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
That was a sneak?
That was a sneak. Okay. Uh, Mr. City Manager, let's go ahead with the business at hand, which is to do with the district map.
Yeah, so I'm going to just get right out of the conversation here and turn it over to our capable consultants. At this point, I know that there have been several maps distributed. They are here to answer questions, work with you all to hear continued thoughts. You sent them away the last time they were here with some high-level things to try to do in creating of a fifth map, which was to keep neighborhoods together. And I'll let them, and some other things.
All right. Before they begin, before they begin, I want to have a discussion with the city commission. There's an issue as to what vote count or what population count, I should say, is the count that this commission wants to rely on. Now, it's my understanding that according to the charter, that we are to draw maps every ten years based on the most recent, the most recent data that's collected at particular census, in this case, twenty twenty census. Now, we're being asked to reinterpret that as saying that we need to count people going forward each year. And I don't see that anywhere in the chart. I think that is, um, that is a, a very, very liberal interpretation of what we're supposed to be doing. The reason why I bring this up is because it's going to completely impact our ability to draw district lines. And is, is radically affecting our ability to properly draw district lines if we eye that we're going to keep a running total of population every year. Now we're looking at, you know, anywhere from twenty twenty-three, and I'm very uncomfortable with that. Alan, do you, uh, can you tell me where in the charter it says that we should keep a running total as we're trying to determine charter maps?
Sure. It, it doesn't actually say that. My position actually sort of agrees with you in the sense that the, the charter does not require you to do that. But in the instance where the city commission would want to include that, you could. There's nothing in the charter that prevents you from doing that. But there's nothing that actually says you have to do that. So as long as you're using the census numbers as a basis, if it would be your choice to, because of those numbers are twenty twenty, that you did want to have some anticipatory numbers with regards to population growth, you could because your charter doesn't prevent you from doing that, but it doesn't require you to do that.
Well, but it does require, require us to make a, a new district map after the census is taken, in this case, in twenty twenty. I mean, is there any, all right, Commissioner Maraitis, do you have any thoughts? I want to go poll everybody. Where are your thoughts about keeping the, 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 the districts and the population based on the twenty twenty census versus the anticipated growth of, of January of twenty twenty-three? Any thoughts on that?
I, I believe I may have been one of the only ones that, you know, who brought this up at our meeting last week that it did confuse me to include projections when we're talking about, you know, drawing the lines. I thought if, if they're, if we're supposed to do it based on the census, why aren't we doing it based on the census? It didn't make sense to me. And also when you're trying to estimate population, to say I'm going to take a unit number and estimate how many people live in that unit, I still think is even a slippery slope because who knows how many people live in, you know, an apartment complex that has nine hundred units in it. We don't know. We're just, we're just projecting. So I, I just don't think it's a good practice, a good trend. I, I think we have always taken our census and then drawn the lines. And I, I think we should stick to that practice and I, I did bring it up. I, I, I don't know. To me, it.
Well, I, I think it may, I think it has a lot of merit. Commissioner McKenzie, do you have any thoughts on this?
If she's saying what you're, what he's saying, right?
Yes, I'm agreeing with the mayor.
Which is the mandate by law, um, after the consensus, we do the redistricting in the, in the tenth year.
Right.
That's where we are. I don't think we manipulate or go out and try to count how many people, you know, are here since twenty and, and recreate it. I think we deal with the census data and, and move forward with that.
Okay.
I think I'm saying the same thing you're saying.
Yeah, I think you are. You are. Thank you.
So I agree with both of you.
Commissioner Glassman, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, if you remember that last meeting, I did notice that there was an issue on one of the buildings that was projected on that sheet before twenty twenty-three and it, it ended up that it wasn't going to be finished. So that was removed and the numbers already were tweaked once. But it, it led me to pursue it a little bit further and I, I, I thought about all of the projects that have received approvals over the years that I've known about and I don't know about every single one, but many projects don't come to fruition. They just don't happen for whatever reason. And so it's difficult to project who's going to be in the population pool there because that's just an uncertainty. And many of those projections are also assuming that these folks are all residents of Fort Lauderdale. They could be snowbirds. They could be non-homesteaded people. They could be just, you know, people that are passing by or just using this.
Transients.
I'm sorry.
Transients.
Whatever. Yes. And so I just feel that I, I, so I guess, I mean, I could go on, but also, you know, we have obviously a very built-out city. So is this even going to be taking into account demolition of single-family homes? And you have, you're already counting those numbers because those are already in the pool and then you might be replacing those with other homes. So then you're sort of doubling that number. Another.
All right. So, 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 so the punchline is do you want to keep it at the twenty twenty census figures?
I was getting to the punchline. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I, you asked me for my thoughts. I'm giving you all of my thoughts. So if you don't want all of my thoughts, just ask me for one.
Can I have some of your thoughts?
Thank you. So these are all of my thoughts. And I'm, is that music? Is that background music?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Not me this time.
Anyway, what I would say is I concur, Mayor, with you and Commissioner Maraitis and Commissioner McKenzie. I think we should stick to the twenty twenty. The numbers are just a little too fuzzy for me. Thanks.
My man. And, and Vice Mayor, what are your thoughts? What are some of your thoughts?
I'll keep it concise. I concur with my esteemed colleagues. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. So with that in mind, where does that put us now with regards to the proposed maps?
I guess I'd have to look to, I don't know that we have any maps to look at tonight based upon that direction, but let me turn it over to our consultant.
Thank you very much. James Gammet Clark, Florida Atlantic University GeoSciences Department. Pleasure to be back, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. You know, it, it's important to note obviously that we are here just as your consultants. Part of our, our role as a consultant is to advise you. Our concern would be, of course, that it's been more than two years since the twenty twenty census. And the projection includes a great deal of construction that's already occurred. The projection only goes out.
Hold on one, hold on, just hold on one sec. Can we, is he on TV? I'm just not seeing.
He's on TV.
Okay, because I'm, we're, we're seeing the PowerPoint and the mayor. Okay. I just want to make sure the public can see. Great. Okay. Great. Thanks. Go ahead.
Of course. So, you know, we were asked to do this analysis. We've done the analysis. What we found, having done that analysis, is that any maps that we create using twenty twenty data will be out of alignment immediately upon adoption if we account for the growth that has occurred and will occur by January. Now, of course, if you direct us to do that, then that's absolutely what we will do. But it's our responsibility to just advise you that there could be legal consequences for that if someone to, someone were to object. Obviously.
Well, actually, actually, but Mr. Gammet Clark, I think that the legal consequences would be greater if we did not follow the law. And I think the charter is very clear that we're to stick to the twenty twenty census figures. What we're doing is mere speculation. If we try to count all the people in the new construction projects, a lot of those projects may be finished by the end of this year, but they won't be populated for months or maybe years to come. How can we possibly count them as residents when they're just ghost apartments at that point? So you have to help us out here because, you know, we are counting on you and we are trying, I know you're not attorneys, but those that, that look at the law, and there will be people out there saying, well, why did the commission veer from the, from the very letter of the charter and start to engage in some sort of, you know, frolic to guess as to what future population numbers would be when we're really relegated to simply rely on the twenty twenty census figures? That's, that's the quandary we're in. I understand your point of view and it will be, it'll be, you know, adjusted in, in eight years from now, you know, when we do another census. But, you know, this will always be a, a problem, not a problem. It would always be an issue in a growing community like we have. You know, we're blessed with our popularity and we're thankful people love to come and move here. But this will always be an issue. You know, where do you draw the line? And I think the charter draws the line right there at the twenty twenty census figures.
Yes, I, I certainly don't want to debate with you. I obviously, I respect your opinion greatly. The decision is ultimately yours. We're just the consultants. But it, it's my duty just to express to you my, our concerns and then you do with that as you see fit. You know, your city has undergone a great deal of growth. Your city charter does specifically cite, which is standard practice, the idea that every district should have as close to equitable population as possible. And our concern is that if we use the twenty twenty data, knowing the growth that has already occurred in the last two years, that the districts that you get will not be equitable. Again, if you direct us to do that, we will happily do that. But I'm just doing what I believe duty bound to do, which is to voice our concern.
Okay. So do, have a consensus from the commission that we should rely on the twenty twenty data? Is that, I, I'm, I'm getting that, I'm getting that feeling that each member of the commission has now expressed their opinion. And I think that's where we want you to go from here. Can we possi, can we possibly have one or two maps drawn up by our next city committee meeting on Tuesday? Is that a possibility?
Certainly, we could have at least one, if not two alternatives prepared for you by next week. We do have a request though. You know, the other function that we serve as your consultant, of course, everybody here is very intelligent. You have an incredibly talented and intelligent staff. The, what we're doing for you as part of this project is not magic. Anybody can do it with the right tools and data. So, but what we're very keen on is making sure that we maintain our independent status so that if we were ever called to court for you, we can state with great conviction that our maps were created independently. And therefore we would request that no maps be shared with us as a suggestion of what it should look like, even if it's done entirely innocently. Our concern is that might muddy the waters. If a map is shared with us that coincidentally ends up being a map that we, we would suggest, it would be very difficult for us to go in front of a judge and state with a hundred percent certainty that this map came from us and not from someone on staff, for example.
Okay. You know, and that, that's fine. We understand the necessity of your independence and objectivity. So, uh, but has been a practice in the past where people have, people from the, from the community have suggested maps. That's a common practice. People having their ideas, as you said, it's, it's not magic, but, um, but there is talent involved in trying to identify population areas and, and trying to ensure the, the connectivity between neighborhood associations and so forth. That's, that requires a good deal of detail. So, but like, but Gammet Clark, the, the community has every right to make suggestions. So.
Not debating at all. We have received maps from the public and we've considered those. In the case of the twenty twenty-three projection, of course, those maps didn't work. But if, if you're directing us to look at the. us to look at the 2020 data, which it sounds like you are, we can certainly go back and look at those proposals and take them into consideration.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Moritas?
I'm just curious how it's going to work. So I know we need two readings. So will our first reading be Tuesday, and then the second one will be two weeks after? Or do we need another special meeting after Tuesday?
I was, yeah, I'll get, we do need to decide that. I think what you all will do tonight is defer this item to next Tuesday so that we stay good with the first reading of an ordinance and keep our advertising in place to the extent that there is advertising. And then you all will either say we're satisfied with the first meeting of May being when the final adoption happens, or if you want to call a special meeting later in the week, next week, or on the off week again, we can.
So where are we?
If you're not going to take action tonight, there will be no--
Action on what?
Tonight was intended to be this item in what we call ordinance first read. So this would have been one of the two required readings.
We still would have to select a map, am I correct?
You can't--
Yeah, but none of the maps that were selected, none of the maps, Robert, were based on the 2020 census. They were based on population projections in January 2023.
So there's going to be nothing to approve tonight? So we will lose the opportunity for--
So if we're going to do that, then why are we voting on a first reading for the--
You're not.
We're not.
I'd like you to defer the item as opposed to just not taking action on it so our advertising stays.
So where do we go from here?
So next Tuesday, they will present what's one or two maps based on the 2020 projection. And we can do that. That'll be the first reading, and we could again do that as a conference report to have discussion and then put it on that evening for a vote.
For the first reading, and then we'd have to schedule a second reading either at a special meeting or--
The following week or the first of May.
Exactly.
So Alan.
Yes.
What is your take on what we are about to do and what we dismiss as a consensus as the outcome of what we asked a consultant to do? Where are we?
With regards to the numbers that we're using?
Yeah. Numbers we're using, and if we go back, what is your legal recommendation for us right now? I mean, because what we just did, in my opinion, is no different than we asked for a fifth map. We didn't like an outcome, and then we asked for something different. And we've done additional research to get here now, and a consultant's saying if we were to go down this road, it would be very hard to defend if we go backwards and use different vehicles to get a map. So as the city attorney, where do you see us right now as we approach what we all agreed that we want to do, because we think we're doing the right thing based on the census?
Your charter supports the decision that you've made tonight. So to the extent it is challenged, we are in a position to look to our charter to say, as I stated before, that it supports what you have chosen to do. And someone argued that, like I said, it doesn't prevent you from doing something different, but it supports what you want to do tonight with regards to using solely the census numbers as it's written. It's not the most artfully written provision in the world, and I think there's plenty of room for that argument to take place. So from a legal standpoint, the decision you've made, which is your decision to make, because you are the deciders in this case, again, I feel comfortable being able to defend, pursuant to your charter, the decision that you've made to use those numbers.
You also said in your statement that either or, because your charter doesn't actually say, so either one of our decisions is we're okay.
Correct, because, one, if you chose, for example, in the alternative to say, we want to include those projected numbers so that we have a more present-day picture, your charter doesn't prevent you from doing that. But it doesn't require you to.
Right.
So that's why, to the extent that you're choosing to rely solely on the census numbers, your charter supports you.
So if we get to next date, they present two more maps, and we don't like those maps, can we still go back to the other four maps?
That--
I don't, the fifth map, I couldn't care less about. Because I think we gerrymandered that map, based on, we didn't like something. Hold on, this is my comment. We didn't like something, or we didn't get what we wanted. I was fine with all four maps, and I thought I lost in each one of them, but I could live with the decision, because that's what the equation spit out, and I thought it was fair. But when we asked you to go back, push, take, jump, we got even emails from people saying, I'm fine being over there, and I'm fine being over there, and I'm okay being over there. People, residents. So I was fine with the outcome of the process. Now we're getting ready to drill it back, do another process, so I'm only asking questions so that when that day comes, I'll know if I have two maps plus four maps. I don't care about the fifth map, but you're saying the fifth map will be in play that day as well? Is that true?
That's, the commission decides to go and use the data that includes the projections to 2023. Those other maps are solely based on numbers--
Projections.
Right, with the projections. So you, the commission, would have to decide that, but the more you go back and forth to your point, Commissioner--
Mm-hmm.
--the more, you know, someone can raise the argument that you don't like what you see, so you're changing it in order to like what you see. So unlike a process where you do have your consultant come up with alternatives and you choose one, the more back and forth there is, the more opportunity there is for folks to say, hey, you don't like what you're seeing, there's this consideration, that consideration. We can't prevent anybody from trying to do that. Now, in retrospect, if we look back to the last time we did this, the process was even more arduous and lengthy. I think it took us two years to--
Because we had people.
Correct.
We had people at a table.
Right. So there was a committee, there was a lot of input, it was done very differently. At the same time, back then, by the time you adopted these districts back in 2012, it was, that 2010 census, those numbers were already stale to begin with. So it's not like, and we weren't challenged on those maps. I'm not saying we wouldn't be challenged here, but the more, you're correct, the more we go back and we tweak it, the more opportunity there is for folks to say that perhaps, you know, that we're doing it for ulterior motives. But back to the what numbers you use, your charter does support your decision--
Oh, I know. I know that. So my question is, and this is for the public, the numbers after the 2020 census were what?
Beg your pardon?
What were the numbers in 2020 after the census?
What do you mean, the numbers? Do you mean the total population?
The numbers we're talking about going back to in 2020, as opposed to the numbers we're dealing with now in 2022. There's two sets of numbers here, 2022 snapshot and a 2020 snapshot. What are those numbers?
The total population for 2020 for the city was 182,760.
In what year?
For the 2020 census.
Okay, what are they now?
Well--
Based on your projections?
Our projection, bringing out to January 2023, would be 194,715.
And that difference is what?
12,000.
Almost 12,000 people.
And that's what our argument today is, 12,000 people.
We don't know if it's 12,000 people. That's just speculation.
I know, but let me finish. But when we first came out of the equation and we got our answer, we were excited. And then when we didn't get what we wanted, a 5,000 head count would have impacted any district if we shifted anything. So if you touched one, it would have impacted another district, whether it's negative or positive. 5,000. Now, we're going to go back now because of 12,000 difference in two years based on projections, and I still think it's because we didn't get what we wanted at the end of this. That's what I think. I'm not holding anybody accountable. You can shake your heads all you want, but this is me getting ready to make a decision about a charter, census, maps that have already been produced, and now we're going back down a road that could possibly create a perception and a legal challenge. And I just wanted to know the numbers for my own edification publicly, so the public can know what we're talking about. I think I kind of knew what I wanted to know before I asked you the question, and you gave me a good answer, and I liked the numbers you presented, and I still think the first four maps were perfectly okay for me.
Okay. Patrick Glassman, do you have any further thoughts on this?
I just wanted to know, Alan, are we okay if we do the second reading on May 3rd, or is that a problem? Or are we going to have to schedule something earlier? Because that would be our second reading date.
I haven't personally spoken to the supervisor of elections. I know that the clerk has had some minor conversations with them. I know they wanted these back months ago. So I think we're the last city, but maybe David can opine on that.
Yeah, they asked for them for, excuse me, mid-April, and I let them know the update as of the last meeting, and that if something was passed tonight, then maybe they would have something by the end of the week, but I can let them know that the first reading is deferred to the 19th and see what they say from there, whether we need to bring it back to the first meeting of May or have a special meeting.
Well, they would have never had anything by the end of this week, because we wouldn't have had the second reading until next Tuesday.
Well, they were looking to--
Arbitrary, they would have.
Right. They were looking to get some advance notice. Let's say you would have picked a winner tonight, right? We would have had reasonable confidence that that map would be going forward, so they'd be able to get sort of a head start. That's kind of what they were looking for. But candidly, and we haven't had this conversation, I don't know what the consequences are. I know they want them now, but if we get them to them on the first meeting of May versus, you know, the following week, I don't know what the consequences--
Can we find that out? So we have some, you know, so we have some surety about that, that we know that we don't have to have a special meeting, or that if we do a second reading on May 3rd, it's perfectly fine? Can we find that out?
We can.
Yep. I think what they're trying to do, Commissioner, is get the precincts ready.
I know.
It's not so much to worry about our lines.
I just want to know the timeline and how much room we have.
So we have until next meeting to find that out, because--
Right.
Okay, so moving forward--
Make that call tomorrow?
What's that?
The clerk will make that call tomorrow to find out what's the date--
Yeah. And they'll let us know at the next commission meeting next Tuesday.
Yes, I'll reach out.
We can't--
All right.
I'll reach out tomorrow to them as of the week.
Now, Mayor, I also think Commissioner McKenzie brings up-- I'm sorry.
No, it's the Commissioner McKenzie's point. If we find out something tomorrow, we can let you know.
So we can--
Yeah.
If we have to do a special meeting, as he's indicating.
Now, Commissioner McKenzie brought up a good point, because if we did have a consensus, actually, five out of five said we want to go to the 2020 numbers. So are we throwing out everything we've seen to this point? Or, as Commissioner McKenzie says, he was happy with the other four, not the fifth. But I just want to know, what are we actually going to be considering so we don't spend our time and the public's time talking about it or thinking about it? Because if we had the consensus that we're, we want 2020 numbers--
We have the consensus that we want 2020 numbers, and we've asked--
Maps that we've seen now thrown out?
The other maps are no longer usable because they were based on inaccurate figures, so we're asking them to provide maps based on the 2020 census.
So we're starting from scratch.
And to respond to Commissioner McKenzie and to everybody else on the commission, we will not leave the meeting Tuesday until we have a map. So we are going to make a decision on Tuesday.
That's not the question I asked.
Well, then I--
No, but I thought it begged to be asked.
Well, then I think we might just need more than one or two. If we're scrapping everything to this point, then I think we might need maybe at least three. That's just my own personal--
Well, we can't squeeze blood out of a turnip, Commissioner, and we'll do our best to try to get what we can from them. Should be a little easier since--
Don't worry.
Sorry, if I was being called--
But I do think we are squeezing blood, because we have five maps, and we just dismissed that. And I say we, and we're going to get two maps, and I don't see us agreeing on two maps.
Well, you don't know. So why don't we just wait till we get to that point, cross that bridge when we come to it? I feel that we will definitely get to a census based on the new numbers, because it's a lot easier to work with than we did with the other maps. I wasn't happy, I was very uncomfortable with the other maps even before I even looked at them, because they were based on projected population as opposed to actual, and I really was very uncomfortable with them. So my decision is not based on whether or not I like the result. I didn't like it before we started the process. I thought it was precarious, and I think thought they could be challenged. So, all right, so we're moving forward based on the 2020 figures, and we'll have our first reading on next Tuesday, and we'll decide Tuesday as to when we're going to have our second reading. Yeah, go ahead.
So you're going to give us a map when?
Well, I'll probably go back to my office and start working on it immediately, but I can, you know, promise you a date until we've had a chance to. We're starting from scratch, basically, so it's going to take some time. Now, there are a couple of things in our favor. Obviously, we've had lots of feedback from each of the commissioners, we've had lots of feedback from the public. These are things that we'll be able to take into consideration as we go forth, but it's going to take a hot minute to get this done. And if I may, as long as I have the microphone, I just have to state, I understand why, you know, you might be upset by the fifth map, but we don't engage in gerrymandering.
Oh, I agree 100%, and I can live with the fifth map. I just don't, I don't like it.
I understood.
I can live with any of the maps, but obviously, others can't live with the maps.
Understood.
Okay, is there any further business of the commission?
Mr. Mayor, we do have seven people that have signed up to weigh in from the public. I don't know if you want to take that tonight or not.
Since we're not, since we're not, I mean, I'd be happy to listen to them if the commission, but I really feel they should perhaps, their discussion is going to be with regard to these maps, and we're not going to really consider these maps.
Right, we're not taking any action.
Okay, so--
But according to what was said today, both legally and from the consultant, if we didn't like those maps, these other maps still could come into play based on what we want, because is that the will of the commissioners? Am I correct?
Ultimately, it's your decision.
That is correct.
So if anything, you could change your mind at the last minute.
I just want to make sure I'm hearing correctly, and, because I know probably we won't win the vote, but I do want to be clear, crystal clear.
We will need to do a formal motion to defer the item to the date certain.
Move to defer. Second, April 19th.
April 19th, please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House?
Yes, so the item has been deferred to the next meeting, which is what date? April what?
19.
19.
April 19th. And any further business of the commission? There being none, the meeting is now concluded. Thank you.